Okay, good morning. The May 30th, 2023 virtual meeting of the Anorundel County Council is now in session. The primary purpose of this meeting is to begin our final deliberations on the FY24 proposed budget for the, for Anorundel County. We will hear from the county auditor and the budget officer today. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Here. Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Bulkey.
Present.
Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rabian.
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
And Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, we do have all seven council members and our county auditor in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do any of my colleagues have any questions before we begin?
Recording in progress.
I'll take that as a no. We will begin with a presentation from the county auditor. Uh, Michelle Bowler, county auditor, um, welcome this morning. You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, Laura has a video that we'll use to get started. Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna press play. Uh, just as a reminder too, if everyone could ensure that they remain on mute while this is playing, that would be very helpful.
Good morning, Chair Smith and members of the council. I am Michelle Bowler, county auditor. We have reviewed the county executives' proposed fiscal year 2024 operating budget and capital budget and program, and these are our results. First, I would like to take, thank the team from the auditor's office who is here virtually with me. I get the opportunity to present to you today, but this presentation and the recommendations before you would not be possible without their dedication and hard work. Our team includes Terry Gibson, Karen Howes, Joshua Naylor, William Amos, and Lisa Heinecke. I'm also happy to introduce our new team of legislative analysts, Amanda Mock, Neil Bergman, and Cheryl Wing Garden. Phyllis Clancy helped with the capital projects review, and we also had the help of Amy Wang from SB and Company. Thank you to the entire team. This is a group of dedicated public servants, and they have made many personal sacrifices to get through the proposed budget in the time available. I would also like to thank department management and staff and the Office of the Budget who have been answering our many questions over the past few weeks. Our review does not happen in a vacuum. Almost everything that we review is based on questions that are sent to all areas of county government. My whole team works intensely during this time to put together our review, but we understand and appreciate our partnership with everyone involved in providing responses. This is certainly not their first time going through these requests, but it is our first opportunity to review the proposed budget when it comes on May 1st. And the questions that we ask are our best tool for understanding what is included in the proposed budget. Specifically, I would like to thank Mr. Trumbauer. We continue to look for ways to improve this process. This has been the first time, first year since I've been in this position that my team has been able to spend quality time with their families over the Memorial Day holiday, or at least part of the weekend. And that was as a result of this collaboration, and I could not be more grateful for that opportunity. I want to first provide an overview of the purpose of our review of the proposed budget that is performed by my office. Throughout the year, we often hear during council meetings that something will be addressed in the budget request. Once we receive the proposed budget, my team and I try to cover as much as possible of the requests in an attempt to understand the many different projects and programs that are included in the proposed budget. This also includes the identification of errors, requests that are not supported, or updated information such as new or changed grants that is available since the proposed budget was introduced. The first part of my presentation includes my general comments on the budget and its contents. After that, I will move on to our recommendations for reductions to the budget. On May 1st, the Spending Affordability Committee, SAC, delivered its report to the council, which provided its recommendations for FY24 spending and the general fund debt limit. I have provided calculations in my presentation showing that the proposed budget is within the recommended spending limit and within the general fund debt limit. I also provided the past four years of SAC recommendations as compared to the general fund spending in the proposed operating budget. For FY24, the general fund appropriation limit is calculated as follows. The recommended FY24 general fund spending of $2 billion is added to the available general fund balance of $147 million and the contribution to the revenue reserve fund of $24.6 million. This totals to the adjusted recommended FY24 spending of $2.17 billion. The general fund spending for proposed FY24 operating budget is $2.1 billion. Specifically, the proposed FY24 spending is below the SAC recommendation by $1.1 million. The SAC recommended FY24 general fund debt limit is $2 billion. The estimated outstanding general fund debt at the end of FY24 is $1.6 billion. Therefore, the proposed FY24 debt is less than the SAC recommended limit by $362 million. Now I will look at debt affordability. There are many factors and assumptions used in this calculation that affect projections. Most of the assumptions used this year in our review are consistent with last year unless otherwise specified. In the proposed capital budget overview on pages one and three, the administration presented its debt affordability analysis, showing that the proposed capital budget and program is within the county's established guidelines. On page one of the capital budget overview, the administration analyzes the capital improvement plan, CIP, as an average of $160 million per year and calculates the debt ratios using that $160 million. On page three, the administration calculates the debt ratios using the actual bonds in the program. The average capital program for the next six years is $187.2 million. This shows that the county is still within its debt guidelines using this capital program and out-year revenue and capital increases that are both 3.5%. This slide shows a table with the debt statistics projected out past the first six years. In scenario one, I use the CIP as proposed and project the far out years, assuming that growth in capital expenses keep pace with revenue growth at 3.5%. I have shown the statistics in five-year increments. The county would stay within all of its guidelines through FY24. Please note that this capital program is relatively front-loaded and has lower estimated capital programs than average in FY27 through FY29. This is only looking at the general county bonds that are included in the capital program. I have also prepared long-range projections using a second scenario to show an alternate projection. In scenario two, I use all of the same assumptions, except I assume programs in FY27 through FY29 are the $160 million Affordable Authority amount using construction inflation. As you see, the debt as a percent of full value guidelines are reached by FY40. The main point of this scenario is to show that growing the capital program at pace with revenue growth long-term and being sure to keep the average six-year program within the limit is better to stay within the guidelines than a capital program growing faster than revenue. Later in our presentation, we will provide recommendations that will help reduce spending that could provide opportunities for current savings that can fall to fund balance and potentially provide additional pay-go opportunities for FY25. As is typical of my comments in this section, we cannot accurately predict that far into the future because there are numerous factors that could change these projections. However, I continue to urge the administration and the council to limit the debt at a level that keeps the debt statistics flat. This next slide shows the proposed changes to the revenue reserve fund. The FY24 proposed operating budget requested transfer of $24.6 million. The current balance limit of this fund is 7% of general fund revenues. However, Bill 41-23 has been introduced and, if passed, will increase the balance limit of this fund to 8% of general fund revenues. FY24 estimated revenues are $2 billion. Therefore, the reserve maximum is $139.3 million at the 7% limit and $159.2 million at the proposed 8% limit. Our FY23 estimates show an ending balance of approximately $131.3 million. With the FY24 contribution of $24.6 million and projected interest of $2.6 million, we estimate an ending balance of $159.2 million, which is the 8% cap. We have reviewed the administration's estimates for the main revenue sources and concur with the estimates within a reasonable margin, and, from what we have reviewed, the assumptions used by the administration are reasonable. Along with the submitted annual budget and appropriation ordinance, the administration introduced several bills to establish tax rates that will provide the revenue to fund the proposed FY24 budget appropriations. Bills 2623 through 4323 established tax rates for the special taxing districts, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, waterway improvement districts, the county property and income taxpayers, the city of Annapolis, and the town of Highland Beach. We have reviewed the calculation of the rates and agree the rates will generate revenue to support the FY24 appropriation requests in ABAO. These bills include changes to the use or occupancy tax, transportation network service assessment, transfer tax, and income tax as listed on this slide. As you know, the administration has set the property tax rate at .98 per $100 of assessed value and .586 for the city of Annapolis. This year, the budget proposes to exceed the tax cap to provide additional funding to the Board of Education. This slide shows this amount. Now I will discuss the operating budget. The FY24 budget proposes to appropriate $13 million for contingencies. This slide shows the amounts appropriated in the contingency account for the last five years. This fund is used for additional appropriation requests. Historically, this account included the cost of snow removal and storm damage, but was also the funding source of many unanticipated needs during FY20 and FY21 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The pay increases for county groups vary, and this slide attempts to summarize the pay increases or average increases provided to county employee groups, the Department of Public Libraries, the Anorundel County Community College, and teachers. Because of various position-specific changes within the different unions and the movement of allowances, it is difficult to provide estimated or average increases this year, but we have reviewed all union agreements and increases applied to verify that the FY24 proposed budget includes all increases in the various union agreements and a 5% COLA and 3% merit for nonrepresented and exempt employees. The FY24 budget includes a net of 68 new general fund positions. This includes 69 new positions, less one abolished position. There is also one new position in opioid abatement fund, one new position in the self-insurance fund, and three new positions in the water and wastewater operating fund. Appendix A provides a summary of the new positions and the estimated impact of these positions, including recurring costs such as salary and benefits, and one-time costs such as computers and desks. American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, funds are programmed into the FY24 proposed budget, similar to how this occurred in prior budgets. These are the following departments with programs over $500,000. These projects would have otherwise come to the council for review per Bill 11121, but will not because they are included in the proposed FY24 budget for approval. There are additional programs included in the operating budget book appendix that are less than $500,000 as well. This slide shows the departments in the FY24 budget that have placeholders for potential future ARPA funding. As discussed in the last slide, any projects over $500,000 will be required to come to the council for review. There are a total of $5.9 million in county-funded grants to outside organizations that are funded by the general fund and $2.6 million in these grant-funded by other funds included in the FY24 proposed budget. Now I want to talk a little bit about the pension plans. The funding method and actuarial assumptions were updated pursuant to the recommendations in the experience study report last November. This slide provides a list of key assumptions that were changed. Experience studies are performed every five years to review the assumptions and make change recommendations. These assumptions are used to determine pension plan costs based on long-term future outlook. As shown on this next slide, these updates increased the actuarial accrued liability as of January 1st, 2023 for each plan. This slide shows the current and historic funding levels for the county's other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust for the general county government, and does not include the component units in the balances at this point. This follows the OPEB policy and uses the same methods and assumptions as last year to determine the actuarial determined contribution, ADC. Based on the OPEB FY22 annual report, the county's total OPEB liability is $969 million, and the asset was $378 million. This leaves a net OPEB liability of approximately $591 million. The decrease in the project total, the projected total liability for FY23 is based on a change in Medicare coverage and a new vendor for processing claims. The projected total liability for FY23 is $656 million, and the $406 million funded portion estimate would bring the estimated funding to 62%. This next slide shows the proposed changes for FY24, for OPEB. The major change for FY24 is for the county health trust to begin paying the past service liabilities for the Board of Education. Past service liabilities are the cost of current employees who will receive benefits upon retirement. The trust already includes county, library, and community college employees. The exact impact to the total OPEB liability is unknown, and an estimate was not able to be provided. The administration still plans to reach its 90% funding goal by 2040. A new valuation of the trust will be completed January of 2025 for FY26 and FY27. I want to take a minute to discuss the component units that have a maintenance of effort, or MOE, agreements related to their funding. We have reviewed the Board of Education's budget and have reconciled the county executive's requests to the schedules provided by the board that present the superintendent and the board's requests. This slide shows the FY24 requested appropriation as compared to the MOE as required by the state and the prior four years of MOE required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. The FY24 proposed budget includes $50.2 million in funding above the MOE, which will be added to the new MOE for next year. Anorundel Community College, we have reviewed AACC's budget and have reconciled the county executive's requests to the schedules provided by AACC. This slide shows the FY24 requested appropriation as compared to the MOE and the prior four years of MOE required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. The FY24 proposed budget includes $1 million in funding above the MOE. We have also reviewed the library's budget and have reconciled the county executive's requests to the schedules provided by the library. This slide shows the FY24 requested appropriation as compared to the MOE and the prior four years of MOE required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. The FY24 proposed budget includes $27 million in funding above the MOE. I wanted to take an opportunity to discuss some of the placeholders and estimates that are included in the budget. The following are generally related to new program startup funding and are high-level estimates that were not able to be supported. The subject-to-sewer capital project includes $1 million. There is also $3.5 million that is being added to the advanced land acquisition project, and there is a 9.5% increase in the trash collection budget, even though the contract is limited to a 4% CPI increase. The Office of Law has advised that this will be completed using a contract modification. The FY24 proposed budget also includes a placeholder for an estimated 3% rate increase for health insurance rates on January 1st, 2024. There are market rate salary adjustment placeholders for the library and AACC and contractual pay adjustments above 5% for certain positions in the Department of Social Services and the Department of Health. One additional program included in the FY24 funding is for the day-to-day management of the Deep Run Community Center, which began in May 2022. Another item that I want to bring to your attention is that the FY24 budget request for 26 capital projects included revenue previously received and unbudgeted. See the breakdown by project and revenue funding source in Appendix D. As this revenue has already been received, the administration included the funding in the FY24 budget request for appropriation purposes. There are also corrections that will be submitted in the supplemental budget for the following areas listed on this slide. These generally relate to state funding coming in either higher or lower than expected. In the proposed operating budget, the water and sewer usage rates both increased by 8.8% in FY24. The environmental protection fee and water and sewer capital facility connection charges will increase in accordance with the rates established in the county code. The solid waste rate increases by 11.4%, and the stormwater remediation fee increases by 5%. I'm going to go through our recommendations a little differently this year. We will still go through by fund type, starting with the general fund, but we will go through these recommendations by category of recommendation rather than department. The first category we'll go over is for turnover recommendations. The county uses this object to determine the savings projected to occur in the personal services category due to vacancies. The amount of turnover included in the proposed budget varies by agency and includes a variety of assumption, assumptions regarding current vacancies, historical spend, and recruitment efforts. We attempt to apply a consistent methodology, but we also include these types of estimates in our review. We are recommending three adjustments to increase turnover, and I will go into these in more detail in the following three slides. For the Department of Aging, the FY24 turnover budget is 4%. The FY23 aging-approved budgeted turnover was 5.4%. However, actual turnover for FY23 is now estimated at 14.2%, and four of 68 positions are vacant as of May 10th, 2023, which is 5.9%. Last year, there were two vacant positions on May 11th, 2022. Considering there are more vacancies than last fiscal year and the estimated increase in the turnover rate for FY23, we recommend that the turnover proposed budget increase by $135,000 or to 5.5% based on historical actual turnover rates. Actual turnover rates for the past three years were in the range from 5.6 to 9.7%. For the Department of Recreation and Parks, the FY24 turnover budget request is 0.7%. FY23 Recreation and Parks approved budgeted turnover was 1%. However, actual turnover for FY23 is now estimated at 9.9%, and 12 of 120 positions are vacant as of May 10th, 2023, which is 10%. Last year, there were five vacant positions on May 11th, 2022. Considering there are more vacancies than last fiscal year and the estimated increase in the turnover rate for FY23, we recommend that the turnover proposed budget increase by $450,000 or to about 3% based on pre-COVID-19 spending in FY19, and adjusted to fund new contractual positions in the proposed FY24 budget. For the Office of the Sheriff, the FY24 turnover budget request is 7.6%. FY23 Sheriff-approved budgeted turnover was 2.2%. However, actual turnover for FY23 is now estimated at 12.2%, and 23 of the 116 positions are vacant as of May 10th, 2023, which is 19.8%. Last year, there were 17 vacant positions on May 11th, 2022. Considering there are six more vacancies than FY22, we are recommending the turnover should increase by 210% or to 8.2% based on historical actual turnover rates. Actual turnover rates over the past three years were consistent in the range from 8.2 to 9.4%. The next category involves two types of recommendations. These are recommendations to reduce the appropriation when there are no programmatic changes but the historical expenditures are not reaching the budgeted amount, or recommendations to reduce the appropriation because there are programmatic changes considered and included but the historical expenditures have not been reaching the budgeted amount. I will try to give a high-level summary of each of our recommendations, but please note that more detailed information is available in Appendix B. For the Office of Central Services, we are recommending a total of $270,000 in reductions to contractual services. This includes a reduction in the fuel oil object. We recommend reducing the FY24 budget request by $40,000. Our calculated estimate considered actual expenditures for FY23 plus inflation, weather volatility, and the estimated cost at the new locations. For county facility repair and renovation, we recommend reducing the FY24 budget request by $200,000. Our calculated estimate considered the Office of Central Services estimated expenditures for FY23 plus inflation. The FY23 estimated expenditures align with the four-year average, which is FY19 to FY22, of $530,000 in this object code. Although the Office of Central Services advised that it cannot get to its project list without having enough budgeted funds, it is estimating to only use 59% of its FY23 approved budgeted amount. Our $200,000 reduction would bring their balance to $600,000. For equipment repair parts, the Office of Central For equipment repair parts, the Office of Central Services is estimating FY23 expenditures to be $434,500, even though the FY23-approved budget is $665,700. Therefore, we are also recommending a reduction in equipment repair parts. We recommend reducing the FY24 budget request by $30,000 to $635,700 to align with the highest fiscal year expenditures. This is a total of $270,000 in reductions for the Office of Central Services. We are also recommending two reductions to the Office of Finance non-departmental debt service for contractual services and debt service. We recommend reducing the FY24 budget request for contractual services by $55,000 to $370,000. Our calculated estimate considered actual historical expenditures plus inflation. We also recommend reducing the FY24 budget request for other costs of issuance by $200,000 to $725,000. Our calculated estimate considered actual recent historical expenditures plus inflation. We are recommending a reduction for the Office of Transportation for a total of $600,000 based on the historical spend and the support provided. This includes other services and grant fund contributions. For other services, the Office of Transportation's bus transportation services contract costs are partially offset by grant funding every fiscal year. The proposed FY24 budget is $293,000 or 11% higher than the highest payment, which is FY20 during the FY19 to FY23 period to date. We recommend reducing the FY24 proposed budget by $275,000 to a total of $2,785,400 to account for the historical contract payment rate. The second part of our recommendation for the Office of Transportation is a reduction to general grant fund contributions, which is the object used for fund matching requirements. The Office of Transportation applies for new and manages existing grants every year that have various matching requirements. The proposed FY24 budget is $355,200 or 55% higher than the FY23 budget, and is $595,000 higher than the highest payment in FY19 during the FY19 to FY22 period. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY24 proposed budget by $325,000 to a balance of $670,000 to account for the historical grant reimbursement rate and provide full matching funds for currently-approved FY24 grants. We are also recommending to reduce contractual pay for the Department of Social Services based on historical expenditures. We recommend reducing the FY24 proposed budget by $170,000 to $2,904,800. Our calculation considered new contractual positions, a $430,000 adjustment to align with the new State of Maryland salary scale, and a 5% COLA increase. We are recommending a reduction to contractual services of $30,000 for the fire department. The FY24 request included a duplicate request that is also budgeted in the Office of Information Technology of $5,000 and a reduction of medical services of $25,000 based on our estimate that considered actual historical expenditures plus additional funds for new firefighters to receive required medical physicals. The next category is for duplicate budgeted items. We are recommending a reduction of $900,000 from the Garage Vehicle Replacement Fund due to duplicate vehicles included on the replacement list. The fund is estimating to replace 162 vehicles totaling about $11,248,400 in FY24. However, our analysis of the vehicles listed to be replaced disclosed that the list contained vehicles already replaced in FY23 and one vehicle duplicated on the list totaling about As a result, the fund will only be replacing vehicles totaling approximately $8.6 million. Therefore, we recommend eliminating the one-time contribution from the County General Fund of $900,000, which leaves the fund with more than enough to achieve its planned replacement of vehicles for FY24. This will reduce the fund's budget request to $11,246,300. There is a recommendation for a budget category of recommendation, I should say, for a budget that is no longer needed. The Office of Planning and Zoning advised that it no longer needed budgeted funds for a land-use graphic designer after unsuccessful recruiting efforts in FY23. We recommend reducing the proposed budget by $25,000. We also have a category of recommendations to reduce based on lack of support. For the Department of Recreation, there was support not provided for increased budget requests. The Department of Recreation and Parks failed to substantiate its cost estimate methodology for the fuel oil object in the FY24 proposed budget contractual services category. We recommend making the FY24 proposed budget consistent with the Office of Central Services' cost estimate methodology for fuel oil. Therefore, we recommend reducing the proposed FY24 budget by $15,000 to account for this fuel oil cost estimation approach. We also recommend reducing other professional services because the Department of Recreation and Parks was not able to provide complete and clear documentation to support the additional funding request. Therefore, we recommend reducing the proposed FY24 budget by $110,000. The total recommendation for rejection of contractual services is $125,000. There was a calculation error in the public library's salary calculation, and the estimated pension budget request does not reflect the latest actuarial report recommendation. Therefore, we recommend reducing the FY24 personal services budget for public libraries requests by $530,000. The Department of Health confirmed that it failed to use the correct hourly rate and formula in calculating the budget request for the bilingual community health outreach workers. As a result of the error, the Department of Health has approximately $30,000 in excess funds requested in the FY24 budget. The Department of Health also failed to substantiate the entire budget request, resulting in an excess budget. Specifically, the FY24 budget request calculation included the FY23-approved budget plus a 7% COLA increase for all nurses and a 5% COLA increase for all other contractual employees totaling $9,224,100. As a result, the Department of Health has approximately $130,000 in excess funds requested in the FY24 budget. We recommend reducing the Department of Health's FY24 proposed budget by $160,000 to correct these errors. The recommendation for an amendment to Pay as You Go and Impact费 Special Revenue Funds are reconciliation items that will update based on any future amendments, including the supplemental budget, and will be updated at that time. Now we'll discuss recommendations that relate to various other funds within the county. There was an error in the calculation of the annual liabilities in the Self-Insurance Fund. Historically, the budget is based on the latest actuarial report, but this year, the prior-year actuarial report was used in error. This resulted in a reduction of $3,660,000. In addition, the county fund balance policy for the Self-Insurance Fund is to hold 2% of the total liabilities. This amount is currently $1.6 million. Based on estimated revenues and expenditures, the FY24 ending fund balance will be over $13.5 million. We recommend that contributions for FY24 be reduced by an additional $9 million to utilize some of this one-time fund balance. This results in a total reduction of $12,660,000. In order to realize that recommendation, reductions in the contributions need to be amended for all of the contributing funds. The reduction in the Self-Insurance Fund results in a decreased contribution from the general fund of $9,210,000. $2,680,000 of this is related to the reduction from the error in the calculation of the annual required contributions, and the remaining $6,530,000 is related to the one-time use of fund balance. The reduction to the Water and Wastewater Sinking Fund is related to debt service consultants. We recommend reducing the FY24 proposed budget by $125,000 to reflect historic spending more accurately. Our calculated estimate considered actual historical expenditures plus inflation. The recommendation for the Water and Wastewater Operating Fund is related to turnover. As noted earlier in the presentation, this object is calculated to determine the savings projected to occur in the personal services category due to vacancies. The Water and Wastewater Operating Fund turnover budget request is 3.6%. FY23 Fund-approved budgeted turnover was 3.9%. Last year, we recommended adjusting the turnover factor from the budgeted 3.9% to 5%, and the administration asserted that the department did not expect the hiring challenges to continue. However, actual turnover for FY23 is now estimated at 16.8%, and 43 of 380 positions are vacant as of May 10th, 2023, which is 11.3%. Last year, there were 37 vacant positions on May 11th, 2022. Considering there are more vacancies than last fiscal year and the estimated increase in the turnover rate for FY23, we recommend that the turnover proposed budget increase by $300,000 or to 4.25% based on historical actual turnover rates. Now I will go through our recommendations for the proposed capital budget. Similar to the operating budget recommendations, we are trying something a little different this year to provide our recommendations by category of recommendation rather than each project and class. All of these recommendations are provided in Appendix C, which follows the order of the budget book rather than category. The first category that I would like to provide is when our review shows that there are available program funds to complete all of the projects identified. The first is Project H583800, Duval Highway Access Improvement. The administration revised the project budget resulting in excess project funds of $80,000. For Project H587300, which is Blue Water to Milestone Shared Use Paths, due to errors in the project budget, the administration revised the project budget resulting in a cost reduction of $185,000. For Project H590500, BWI Trail Extension, due to a revision in right-of-way and land acquisition costs, the administration revised the project budget resulting in excess project funds of $65,000. Project H575300, Rockbridge Road Embankment Rehabilitation, had several inconsistencies that were identified in the project budget. These included a construction contract amount budgeted that exceeded the contract award, an amount for prevailing wage included even though prevailing wage adjustments by policy are not needed if a contract has been awarded, a contingency amount that exceeded the standard 10% used, and certain undefined other costs were included in the budget. These differences totaled in excess of $500,000, and the administration explained that due to uncertainties, the additional project funds should be retained. We recommend that the project budget related to the construction contract award and contingency be reduced, and the budgeted other costs remain in the project to address the administration's concerns. Therefore, we recommend reducing prior-approved general county bonds by $250,000. For Project H542100, New Street Lighting, as of May 20th, 2023, the available project balance was $87,268, and the project encumbrances totaled $501,000. Annual expenses averaged $142,000. Based on the existing open encumbrances and available project balance, the administration determined that the annual request can be reduced from $150,000 to $75,000. For Project E568900, Crofton Area High School, the Board of Education advised that the project is in closeout and has determined that project funding of $1,950,000 can be released. For Project L542400, Library Project Plan, as of May 20th, 2023, the available project balance was $32,200, and the FY24 budget request provides $60,000 for the Brooklyn Park Library Elevator Feasibility Study and potentially other efforts. The public libraries advised that the available project balance would be used to address any new planning efforts needed. However, no new planning efforts had been identified. Therefore, we recommend reducing FY24 general fund Pago by $30,000. The next category of recommendations is for projects where support for the request was not provided. For C519600, Information Technology Enhancement, the administration did not provide support for $4 million of the FY24 request for this project, except that they anticipate future implementation of system upgrades because of the termination of the workday implementation. However, a plan has not yet been established. Therefore, we recommend deleting FY24 general county bonds of $1,029,100 and reducing FY24 general fund Pago by $2.5 million. For Project C582800, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and Other Green Technology, as of May 20th, 2023, the available project balance was almost $6 million, and approximately $350,000 had been expended and encumbered. The administration has requested $660,000 in FY24. However, the administration has not defined next steps, an implementation plan, and related costs. We recommend deleting the FY24 request of $660,000 of general county bonds. For Project P509000, Peninsula Park Expansion, the administration advised that recent bid results and reassessment of available project funding resulted in the FY24 budget request no longer being needed. Therefore, we recommend deleting FY24 general county bonds of $1,392,000. Project H587200, New Cut Road and Crane Highway Sidewalks, had errors in calculating the estimated construction cost, resulting in a cost reduction of $395,000. For Project P40200, Greenways, Parkland, and Open Space, as of May 20th, 2023, the available project balance was approximately $12.4 million, and the project had $134,000 in encumbered funds. The administration provided a list of planned projects. However, fiscal year expenditures ranged from $0 in FY21 to a high of $3.8 million in FY20. The available project balance is more than three times the highest annual activity in the project over the last five years. Also, planned FY23 acquisitions have not been successful, resulting in new land acquisition priorities to be developed and pursued by the administration. Based on historical expenditures, the expected activity, and the available fund balance, we recommend deleting FY24 general county bonds of $2 million. Project F572800, New Project F five seven two eight hundred New Police CID Facility and Project F five eight zero four hundred Zetron Tone Generator are complete. Therefore, we recommend reducing prior approved public safety impact fees by one hundred and twenty thousand and prior approved Pago by two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars respectively. The administration has decided not to pursue Project H five six nine four hundred Mountain Road Corridor Revitalization in its current form, resulting in excess project funds. We recommend reducing prior approved highway impact fees District Two by three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The administration has also advised that no further work on Project P five four four one hundred Dairy Farm is planned. Therefore, we recommend deleting prior approved general county bonds of three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Two projects have recommendations related to calculation errors in the support provided. This results in a recommendation to reduce Project H five eight three seven hundred Pleasant Plains Road Safety Improvement, FY twenty-four general county bonds by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Project L five eight four one hundred Millersville Library FY twenty-eight general county bonds by eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. A project schedule change occurred for Project L five seven six one hundred New Glenn Burney Library that reduces the required cost escalation. Therefore, we recommend reducing FY twenty-four general fund Pago by one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, reducing FY twenty-five general county bonds by one million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and reducing FY twenty-six general county bonds by four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We identified two projects that can utilize impact fee funds that are available to swap for general county bond funding. Those are Project E five five zero three hundred Old Mill Middle School North and Project E five five zero four hundred Old Mill Middle School South that can reduce FY twenty-four general county bonds by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and nine hundred thousand dollars respectively, using Education District Five and Six impact fees. Now I will move on to recommendations for capital projects in the utility funds. The first recommendation is for a design bid that came in less than the estimate for Project B five six eight zero 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 Shipley's Choice Stream Restoration resulting in a reduction of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in the project budget. There are two projects that included duplicate contingencies and escalation. They are N five nine zero eight hundred Millersville Landfill Maintenance Building Upgrades, where we recommend reducing FY twenty-eight solid waste funds by thirty-two thousand and reducing FY twenty-nine solid waste funds by three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and Project S seven nine seven nine hundred Broadneck WRF Upgrade, where we recommend reducing FY twenty-five wastewater bonds by four hundred thousand dollars. There are two projects where we are making a recommendation for a multi-year project reduction based on historical spend. For Project S eight oh four six hundred Wastewater System Security, as of May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the available project balance was one point five million dollars, and the project had forty-three thousand dollars in encumbered funds. The administration provided a list of planned projects. However, fiscal year expenditures ranged from zero dollars in FY twenty to a high of two hundred and thirteen thousand in FY twenty-one. The available project balance is more than seven times the highest annual activity in the project over the last five years. Based on historical expenditures, the expected activity, and the available fund balance, we recommend reducing prior approved wastewater Pago by one million dollars. For Project B five five one eight hundred Storm Drainage and Stormwater Management Infrastructure, as of May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the available project balance was four point six million dollars, and the project had four hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars in encumbered funds. The administration provided a list of planned projects. However, fiscal year expenditures ranged from five hundred and seventy thousand in FY nineteen to a high of two point one million in FY twenty-two. The available project balance is more than twice the highest annual activity in the project over the last five years. Based on historical expenditures, the expected activity, and the available fund balance, we recommend deleting FY twenty-four WPRF Bonds of one million dollars. The following two projects are complete, and the funding is no longer needed. Project W eight hundred three hundred Baltimore City Water Main Repair can reduce prior approved water bonds by two million dollars, and Project W eight zero one seven hundred Glenn Burney High Zone can reduce prior approved water bonds by fifty thousand dollars. The next category is for projects with calculation errors that change the required funding needed. Project W seven seven eight six hundred Crofton Meadows to WTP Upgrade, the project cost estimate included an error in the calculation resulting in a cost reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Project W eight oh six three hundred Water Main Replace and Upgrade had a project cost estimate that included an error in the calculation resulting in excess funds of three million dollars, which is a cost reduction of six hundred thousand dollars each fiscal year from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. The project cost estimate for Project S six four seven five hundred Baltimore County Sewer Agreement included an error in the calculation resulting in excess funds of eight million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved wastewater bonds by two million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, deleting FY twenty-four wastewater bonds of six million six thousand dollars, and reducing FY twenty-five wastewater bonds by one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The final three recommendations are to move funding to the out years due to Project Elise. This results in a recommendation for Project W eight oh nine seven hundred Crofton Meadows WTP Building Improvements to move the construction funding to FY twenty-five. We recommend moving the FY twenty-four request of water bonds to FY twenty-five. Advertisement for Project W eight one zero four hundred, which is Crofton Meadows WTP Rehabilitation, will begin in June twenty twenty-six, and five million one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of construction funding can be moved from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six. Finally, for Project S eight oh two three hundred WRF Infrastructure Upgrade and retrofit, the administration advised that the estimate for the work, the needed work at the Protectant WRF Air Piping Mods was higher than anticipated and that this child project will need to be competitively bid, resulting in the schedule for this project being delayed. The administration is attempting to expedite this work as quickly as possible to try to complete this design and bid in FY twenty-four. However, these delays would delay the need for construction costs of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this child project from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. As previously mentioned, Appendix A is a summary of new positions. Appendix B is a summary by department of the proposed operating recommendations. Appendix C is a summary of the proposed capital recommendations by project. And Appendix D is a summary of the changes for unbudgeted revenues. I would like to thank the council for listening patiently to this presentation and hope you will consider our recommendations. I want to take a moment to note that we have recently received support for various requests, even though the majority of our requests were sent the first week in May. This can be support as simple as a quote that supports the price included in the budget. I appreciate that the information was finally received, but those types of delays and or errors in the initial support or lack of response take a tremendous amount of time for many people involved, but especially of my team. They are already working nights and weekends to get through this budget, and it is a part of the process that I am still find trying to find ways to correct. Many of these pieces of support resulted in recommendations being removed, but the time was already taken to draft and review everything because we didn't not, we did not know that anything was available. Some were not removed because new explanations were provided as late as Friday, but with no support for these new statements. I mention this because it uses so many resources, and without noting, you would never know the last hours or wasted time on these types of recommendations. We work very hard to ask specific questions to attempt to make sure everything is available and is included, but we have no other way to understand than what is provided by the departments. This presentation and our recommendations show the end result of a significant amount of work by all involved in this process. So I again thank my team for their commitment to performing our independent review of the budget. But I also want to thank the many people in the administration as a whole, and specifically the Office of the Budget, that help us in this review. I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to supporting you through the remainder of the process. Thank you.
Madam Auditor, I just want to say thank you for that in-depth analysis. First, sort of budget review I've had virtually, and those some of the other council members have done that in the past. But this was definitely unique. Any council member has any additional comments or questions? All right, I don't, I don't see any hands. Mr. Trumbauer, I know at this point we allow the administration time to respond or but the auditor's recommendation. So the council is scheduled to take a recess until three P M. Is that still an adequate timeline for you, Mr. Trumbauer?
I think Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the auditor referenced this, but we've, we've been working with her pretty closely over the past few days and weeks. We have a pretty good handle on our rebuttal, so I would be comfortable moving up the start time to two P M. That'll give everyone a chance to grab a little lunch. We can do our last minute tune-ups. But I'm good with two o'clock if that suits the council.
Is there any objection to two P M. Time for the Budget Officer for any of the council members? All right, well, in the interest of time, the council stands at recess until two P M. We will see you back here virtually to hear the second portion of this. The May thirty of twenty twenty meeting of the council is, I'll get ready to read the second portion of that. So, yeah, we'll start in the morning. Take care and see you all shortly. All right, the May thirty of two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Anaroma County Council is now reconvened. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Ms. Hummer, I know is going to be a few minutes late. Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodvian.
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we do have six council members and our county auditor in attendance with Ms. Hummer, planning to join us shortly here.
Thank you. All right, we will now hear from the administration's rebuttal to the auditor's recommendation. We'd like to introduce the Budget Officer, Chris Trumbauer. Sir, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. For the record, I'm Chris Trumbauer.
Recording in progress.
As promised, we shaved an hour off the time, and so we're hoping to get you out a little bit early today. In the coming moments, you should be receiving via email a summary sheet and some detail of the comments that I'm about to walk through. We were literally dotting i's and crossing t's until about thirty seconds ago, so you should have that very shortly. I believe it will be coming from Assistant Budget Officer Stephen Terro. So in preamble, let me just say, to tag along to Madam Auditor's comments, this is not quite the end, but it's a significant phase completion of a long process. So in addition to acknowledging my team in the Budget Office, I do want to give a shout out to department directors and their budget staff, as well as the auditor team. The last couple of weeks have been a lot of long hours. But I think, as you'll see, the process has come to a closer to consensus than than I've ever seen. In fact, as a spoiler alert, we're going to agree with about seventy percent of the auditor's recurring operating recommendations and about seventy percent of the capital recommendations as well. We used the time over the last week to really hone in on the things that we agreed on and disagreed on. In some cases, there's policy differences, and other cases, just different ways to analyze things, come up with a different result. So all in all, when we look at the auditor recommendations, there was five million four hundred and forty thousand dollars of recurring operating cuts recommended and seven million six hundred twenty thousand one-time cuts recommended in the general fund. There's obviously other ones in various special funds and utility funds, but we're going to spend most of our attention on the general fund. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to start walking through. I'm going to start with the auditor's recommendations on operating budget, and I believe I'm going to follow along with the same order that she had in her presentation. So starting on operating with the Office of Central Services, this is the forty thousand dollar cut for fuel oil. We are okay with that. The next one on Office of Central Services, the two hundred thousand dollar on contractual services cut. The administration disagrees with this. We provide an analysis that shows that this cut would force a larger backlog to renovations and repairs to county facilities, and we will provide the council with that analysis shortly. So that's one we disagree with. On the next one is supplies and materials in central services. That was a thirty thousand dollar cut. We're okay with. Bear with me for one second. I'm going to move to a larger screen so I can see everything on one. Here we go. Okay, so we're going to move on to the.
Reading from your summary or are you reading from?
I'm reading to the color-coded operating sheet.
Oh, okay.
If, if it's helpful, I can share my screen. Is that something the council would prefer?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Because I don't think we have that document yet.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping you'd have it.
Mr. Trumbauer, it was just sent to me. I just added it to the shared folder, and I will bring it up on screen if you'd like me to.
Oh, yeah, let's do that. That way I'm not talking and leaving at the same time because that can get ugly. Okay, so that's the summary sheet. And I went through that a little bit, so I believe if you move on, you'll start to see our color-coded recommendations. Yes, okay. As you can see, we went through great care to make it large enough print that you could read. But hopefully you all can use the Zoom function. It is a lot of information, but this will at least allow you to to track with what I'm talking about. Okay, so we left off on central services. We're now going to start on the Office of Finance, non-departmental. The first one was the lease rate adjustment of nine hundred thousand. We agree with the auditor's comments there. The next one is the nine point two million dollars of other inter-fund reimbursement. So this is, this is an accurate assessment, but we would advise the council that unless you have a competing need where you need one-time funds to pay for something else, we would prefer that you keep this funding in the self-insurance fund. There's a lot of fluctuation with this fund from year to year, and although it is an unusually large fund balance, that money will eventually get spent, and it will help insulate us against a future drawdown. So we would acknowledge that it's a good cut, but say, keep it in the self-insurance fund. It's not doing any harm there. Councilwoman Rodvian, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I think you started describing that, you know, your position there before I was able to find your, find my place. I was having a little difficulty getting in to Zoom so I could read it. So you could, could you tell us where exactly you are in the document?
We're on the first yellow row. So if you look at what's up on the screen now, the yellow row is Office of Finance, non-departmental. It's recommending a nine point two million dollar total cut. So we are okay with the recurring cut, but we would advise not. So we are okay with the recurring cut, but we would advise not taking the $6.5 million of one time.
Okay, so just to clarify, green means you're okay with the cut, red means you oppose the cut, yellow means in part.
Yes, we've invented this totally unique color coding system that happens to coincide with stoplights. We found that to be very serendipitous.
Thank you, and I apologize. I don't remember this from before, but now-
Well, we try and make everything better every year, and this is our newest enhancement, so. Okay, so is everyone straight on that? The recurring cut, 2.68 million, we're okay with that. But the one-time cut, we would advise the council, leave it in place unless there's a burning desire to do something with one-time funding. All right, so we're going to move back into the red ones. Next is the contractual services and consultants. Auditor's recommending a $55,000 cut. We, we just don't think we can handle that. The recent history has been low due to COVID, and we think that current spending rates will increase, so we would oppose that. The next one is the debt service. This is other costs of issuance. That's a $200,000 recommendation similar to above. We just don't think that that's justified based on what we anticipate in FY '24. The next cut is for Office of Transportation. There's a $275,000 recommendation. So we, we understand what the auditor's analysis is here. She's looking at historical levels, and it's true that prior to this year, a lot of effort was paid for with other COVID grants. And so if you look year over year on the county side, yes, it is going to go down. But we're making some of that up with county funding to supplant what used to be there by these federal grants. So if we take this reduction, we're very concerned that the, that the department would actually have to reduce their level of service, which is something that we don't want to do at this time. So we would disagree with that cut at this time. Moving down, the next one, again, in Office of Transportation, this is $325,000. This is, this would result in an under-utilization of grants because they require a county matching dollars. Okay, so the next two I'm going to package together. These are for the Department of Libraries. So these are both good cuts. It's 600, sorry, 365,000 of salary and wages and a corresponding 165 in pension. Those are good cuts. We don't disagree with the auditor's assessment. I will just say that the library system has been asking the council for an additional $500,000 to put towards their market rate adjustment. So if the council wanted to, they could acknowledge these cuts, but not pass an amendment that implemented them. And you could tell the library board, repurpose these funds into your salary enhancement. So that would essentially be acknowledging the cut. You would keep that money in place, but the library board would be able to use it, and then they would have the total market rate adjustment being the 485 that we included in the budget, plus now this combined 530,000 to augment that. So that would be about a million total dollars towards that effort. So that's a policy call on the council's side, but that's what we would suggest from the administration's standpoint. Next one is the $25,000 from OPZ. We're okay with that. That's a double count. The next one for Department of Aging, this is a turnover cut. So we looked at this again when we saw the auditor's cut. We think that there is a cut there. We would advise not taking the whole thing. We would be comfortable with 50,000 to Department of Aging, but we don't want to cut too close to the bone. Again, our analysis shows that their spend rate in '24 couldn't support 135,000. All right, so similarly, next one is Department of Wreckin Parks. So this was one we've had a lot of discussion with the auditor's office about, and I think we're agreeing to disagree. But we've, we've got a analysis that shows that there actually is not a cut to be had here. We think that their level of effort is increasing, and they're hiring nine of its current vacancies. So we will provide a separate analysis to the council to back up our position. But we would advise not taking the Wreckin Parks turnover cut at this point. As you all know, the administration and the council are frequently asking that department to do more, and so we'd like them to have the resources available to do that. Next one is a partial agreement. This was their fuel oil. We think there's a cut there. We wouldn't want to take the full 15,000, so we're agreeing to 7,000. And then on the final Wreckin Parks cut, this is $110,000 to the contractual services. This is two components. $10,000 is for the veterinary service in Kinder Farm Park, which I know the department thinks is very critical, so we would oppose that. And then the $100,000 was a request for the Green Infrastructure Network to continue that work. That is an administration priority and is in alignment with the legislation that supported the Green Infrastructure Network, so we would disagree with that cut at this time. Next two are Department of Health. First one is 30,000 to the Personal Services. We're okay with that. The next one is 130,000 to contractual pay, and this is largely for the school health nurses. Now, this is an interesting one because we technically agree, we agree with the auditor's analysis. This is a legitimate cut. But similar to the libraries, I know that the school health nurses have been talking to the council and coming to the budget hearings. If the council was to want to give them anything more than what we included in the proposed budget, you could just choose to repurpose these funds. So rather than cut school health nurses, you could acknowledge the cut, but just say redeploy it in Personal Services to give a little bit extra of a salary enhancement this year. But that, again, is a policy call that the council could choose to make. All right, we're going to get into a series of greens here. This will go fast. There's the $170,000 contractual pay to Department of Social Services. We're okay with that. There's $5,000 for the Fire Department data processing. That was a double count. And then the $25,000 in Medical Services, we can live with that. So on the Sheriff Department, you remember all that discussion we had about their vacancies during their presentation? We do believe that they could sustain this turnover cut, but again, a policy call. The Sheriff's Department was asking for an additional position for their professional services. If the council chose, this would be a way to pay for that in a revenue net-neutral way. So I just wanted to throw that plug in there. On the garage vehicle replacement cut in Central Services, that's the flip side of the 900,000 we talked about at the top, so we're okay with that. And then this is where the self-insurance fund comes in. The total of 3.6 million of recurring and 9 million in one time. So again, as I explained above, we agree with the calculation error, but we would advise against taking the one-time cut because we figure that that funding will come in handy in the future. So we like parking it there rather than taking it out and putting it somewhere else. There's two cuts recommended in DPW funds. There's the Water and Waste Water Sinking Fund. That's 125,000. We concur with the auditor. And the 300,000 in the Personal Services, that's a turnover cut. We can live with that as well. So that concludes our operating rebuttal. As you can see, there's a lot more green than anything else, so that is about 70% agreement with the auditor. If we move over to contractual, looks like you're showing that on the screen. I've told you guys this before, but OIT is, is not my strong suit in Budget Officer land, so we've asked Director Jack Martin, if he could join us to explain, we're basically okay accepting part of this cut, but I wanted Jack, in his own much more intelligent words, to explain the administration position on our total cut. So Jack, are you on the Zoom? Can you-
Yes.
Take over?
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, council members, for a minute to talk a little bit about our IT requests. I would request that we have 1.8 million of the 3.5 million cut back so that we can work primarily on the real-time crime center, which was late added to the budget, as well as many, many conference rooms that we're working on across the county. The conference rooms, when we are evaluating them for upgrade enhancement, we're not just adding capabilities to add employees that are working from home at the time. We're looking at and evaluating each one to potentially broadcast activities for public meetings, which is a benefit really to all the public. It's not just a benefit internally to employees. So where appropriate, we're adding that technology so that departments that are, you know, especially like Public Works and others can have public meetings and broadcast directly from their rooms. And there are additional costs for that. The last item I wanted to bring your attention is that we're coming up on the need to replace items that were purchased during the COVID boost. So we bought probably about 20 to 25% more equipment during COVID, and that life cycle of those items is coming up. We need to replace those, and we are seeing an increase in all of the costs across the board, especially for hardware. So we do need additional funds to cover that. Again, thank you for the opportunity to-
Jack, real quick, real quick, and what are the items that are reaching the life, in a life cycle?
Primarily their laptops, as well as items like cell phones and iPads. That's where most of this-
What are the laptop brands? Do you know? Are they Dell?
They are Dell. Primarily we work with Dell, correct. Some HP.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Appreciate it. All right, so I'm going to jump into the rest of them, and I just want to take a second to just acknowledge the amount of work that the DPW team and other departments put in over the last couple of days, working with the auditor's office. So capital is obviously very complex, and there's a very voluminous amount of information there. And I think what you're seeing is the result of a lot of behind-the-scenes collaboration. You'll notice there's a lot of green on here. And the ones in red, we will take a second to talk through why there's disagreement. But we were, we were really able to find consensus on most of the capital recommendations, so I just want to take a second and acknowledge that. But that being said, we will start with another red one. So the auditor recommended a $660,000 cut to the EV charging station, and this is basically defunding the FY '24 appropriation. And the administration disagrees with that, mostly for a big-picture reason. This is a, this is basically a mandate that we've got to build out a network and convert the county fleet and really be prepared for the future. So I think the basis for the auditor's cut is we didn't have $660,000 of itemized expenses that we could show towards this. And this is, that's not really what this category is for, in our opinion. This is more an incremental contribution each year to build out this big network. And this network is going to cost millions, tens of millions of dollars. I wanted to share that we are working with the Resilience Authority to do an MOU. They're going to be working on bringing in additional funding and opportunities, but we don't want to take money away from this project right now because we're just getting started. So this is a policy disagreement that we would prefer that we keep as much resources as possible in that project so we can continue this long-term project. The next one is Police CID. We're okay with that. That's 120,000. And similarly, the Z-tron Tone Generator, which is my favorite ever capital project because it sounds like something from the future. We're okay with that cut, 215. The next cut is another, this is a policy disagreement. So the auditor's recommending $2 million of county funding out of Greenways, Parkland, and Open Space. And I think, as the council knows, this is where we put the state program open space dollars. And then we tend to bolster that with county funds when available because this is the project we use to have other conservation acquisitions where we don't necessarily, either they don't qualify for program open space or we don't want to use program open space dollars because of all the strings that come attached with that. So as we look to implement the Green Infrastructure Network to support Bill 822, we want to make sure that we have the resources available to act when there are conservation parcels available. So we deliberately put extra money in this so that the county would have those resources available to continue taking advantage of opportunities when they present themselves. So we do not want to defund this at this time. We're going to go through a series of okays now. The Peninsula Park expansion, we're okay deleting those funds. That seems to be a bid price update. With the Dairy Fund, that's $340,000 of prior approved. It's no longer needed. We're okay taking that. Pleasant Plains Road Safety Improvement, I think that's another cost update, 150,000. We're okay with that. On the Deval Highway Access Improvement, so we agree with this. The auditor recommended 80,000, but we think actually the real number is 77,000, so it might just be a rounding error, but that would reflect the true cost of the project, so we would ask that you reconcile that to 77. New Cut Crane Highway Sidewalks, 395,000. We're okay with that. We're okay with similarly reducing impact fees for the Blue Water Milestone SUPs, 185,000. BWI Trail Extension Baybrook Connector, we are okay with the auditor's recommendation on that. And also the Mountain Road Corridor Revitalization, reducing the highway impact fees, 370,000. We're okay with that. On the next one, this is Brock Bridge Road, the Little Patuxent. So auditor's recommending $250,000. We think that's premature. The construction's just getting started, and we don't want to take money away from this before that all gets settled. So we'd hate to have to add money back in later, so we are asking to pass on that cut of 250. New Street Lighting, $450,000. We're okay with that. The next two is a bond impact fee switch-out, funding swap for Old Mill Middle School North, Old Mill Middle School South. We're okay with that. And the next one is a Crofton Area High School reversion of 1.5, 1.95 million. We are okay with that. On the Library Project Plan, this is just $30,000, but we don't want to remove that balance because this is what the library's used to address any needs to come up during the year. So we would like to keep that $30,000 in place. The new Glen Burnie Library Cut, 1.8 million, we can live with that. And similarly, 845,000 for Millersville Library. DPW tells us those are okay. That latter one is an FY '28 out-year cut. So that totals in our general fund, we're agreeing to $10,159,000 of total cuts. We're now going to walk through the other funds real quick. So Waste Management in the Maintenance Building Upgrades, we're okay with the 364,000. On the Baltimore County Sewer Agreement, that's 8.8 million. We are not going to oppose that. The next trio, we're asking the council to pass on. That's the Broadneck Treatment Upgrade, reducing 400,000. We don't want to do that. DPW disagrees with the cut. It's not duplicative. This is additional contingency, so we would ask not to take that 400,000. And we don't like the funding swap of the other project here, the infrastructure upgrade and retrofits. You can see the explanation there, which I believe I've committed to read verbatim, so let me just get this on the record. The DPW disagrees with the cut because this recommendation is based on S-802380, which is a project for repair to the Patuxent air piping, which was damaged. While the system is currently functioning, it lacks the redundancy and presents a major risk to maintaining the operation of the facility. So DPW is expediting this work as quickly as possible and will rebid the, or will bid the project in FY '24. So we need to have these funding, these funds available. The Parents, a multi-year project, funds design and construction of needed improvements at the water reclamation facilities. So any unused funds here will just be transferred to other active projects in the parent project. So that's a long way of saying we would prefer you do not take this cut, please. And then the next one is reducing prior-approved wastewater pay-go by a million. And we would disagree with this, given the number of facilities that we still have out there to be upgraded. If the council really wanted to do something here, you could reduce 500,000 in '24 and shift that to '25, so you can defer 500,000 there if, if you feel strongly about this. Next is Crofton Meadows. Next is Crofton Meadows, uh, Water Treatment Plant. We're okay with the two hundred fifty water bonds. Uh, three million of water meter replacement, um, that's a total of recommendation for multiple years. We can live with that. Um, the next few are funding swaps in Crofton Meadows, uh, Building Implementation and Crofton Meadows Rehab. We're okay with both of those. The Baltimore City Water Main Replacement, that's a two million dollar cut for, um, prior approved water bonds. We're okay with that as we are okay with the Glenn Burney, uh, Zone for the prior approved water bonds by fifty thousand. Um, and getting into our final, uh, red-coded one, uh, storm drainage, storm water management infrastructure, uh, this is a recommendation to reduce the WPRF bonds by a million. Um, but this is, uh, work effort that is really not decreasing. The demands are increasing, in fact. So, uh, this is a, what we use for, um, large legal settlements as, uh, part of the county. And we would like to preserve this funding for when those land. So we would ask the council not to take this cut. And then finally, the Shipley's Choice Stream Restoration, that's a two hundred fifty-five thousand dollar give back, uh, in twenty-four. Um, we can live with that. So, uh, total of other funds is, uh, fourteen million, uh, seven hundred eighty-five that we agreed with. Um, so I think we can stop sharing screen. I'll make some closing comments and then we'll all be about our day. Uh, so I see your hand, Councilwoman Rodvian, but if, if you'd prefer, I can do my closing and then you can ask questions. Or did you want to ask something specific about something there?
Go ahead, Ms. Rodvian.
Sorry, I had myself on mute. Um, if, if it's all right, I'll go ahead and, well, I'll, I'll ask and then you can decide when the best time to answer them. Then may, they might be something you're covering. Um, the first, the first one I noted, or the first question that I had was in the, um, in the operating, uh, pages of the document that you just had, you, you didn't have the nice totals like you had in the, um, capital projects in the second part of the document?
Sure. So I would refer you, um, to the other, to the, the very first page of the PDF that you should have received is the summary of the operating. So what that will show is, um, we agreed to three point eight million of the recurring operating cuts in the general fund. Um, and then it also lists for the other funds as well. But if I was you and I was on the council, that would be the number I'd be most concerned with.
Okay, thank you. I, I missed that.
Not at all.
And then my second question was, I just, this, and maybe this is a question for Madam Auditor. Um, I, this is, um, significantly steeper cuts than we've seen in the past. And I was just curious if you had any theories, either of you, about why that, um, might be the case. I mean, obviously this is, I, I think encouraging news for the council because it just, it gives us elbow room. I'm sure it's great for you as well.
So I, I can answer that if it's okay, Madam Auditor, and you can feel free to chime in, um, obviously, but, uh, so I think there's two things going on. Number one, and the auditor references in her remarks, we did work more closely than ever before trying to find consensus this year. Um, but I also do want to point out, uh, specific to the general fund, um, the, the big thing there was the self-insurance fund cut and that, that was a calculation error. So, um, these things happen. It's a two point one billion dollar budget. Uh, you know, we'll take responsibility for that. But to me, that underscores the importance of this process that you all and the auditor do after May first, right? We know it's a big budget. We know there's mistakes in there and we all have the same, um, outcome in mind, which is to get the best, tightest possible budget. So this is a great example of the auditor's office found a, a, a sizable error. And now we're going to be able to utilize that hopefully, and you can repurpose those funds in, you know, into something else that might be a council priority or, or, or something. So to me, this, this is more than maybe the last couple of years. I know when I was on the council, there were some years where there were more cuts. Um, but this is, this is the process working as it should. Um, did, Michelle, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so. Thank you for summarizing.
Um, so, Councilwoman, that's actually a great segue to my closing comments.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, so because we have, I think, uh, a consensus on a sizable amount of funding, uh, again, I'm going to hone in on that general fund amount. So, so remember, there's, there's general fund, operating, uh, recurring and one-time fund, right? So we don't want to spend recurring money on things that are going to have a recurring cost year to year. Um, but we, that's three point eight million dollars that we have now agreed with that is available to do, um, various things. Uh, the council has some options. Obviously, some of them require, uh, the county executive to, uh, participate in the supplemental. Um, but one thing that I want to reference, uh, which is a kind of new idea that's, that's beginning to take shape is that, uh, right now, the, um, Board of Education and the Teachers Union have a tentative agreement, uh, based on the proposed, uh, budget of a, um, a contract for the upcoming school year, uh, which is a very significant. It's the six percent cost of living adjustment and the two percent merit, um, step. Um, so that would set the, um, starting teacher salary at about fifty-three thousand dollars a year and change. Um, over the past week or two, we have seen several other jurisdictions, um, set their likely teacher starting salaries at closer to fifty-nine thousand dollars, uh, which puts Anarondol at a significant competitive advantage, uh, competitive disadvantage for, um, hiring new teachers. And, uh, the latest number that I saw was that we have three hundred and fifty vacancies, thereabout. Um, now we know that that's going to be an issue if we're trying to fill those vacancies and we're at such a disadvantage. So we believe that there is a very timely opportunity, uh, using at least some of the funds that we've identified today, uh, to do something significant and substantial, uh, to raise up starting teacher salary. We've had some very preliminary, um, discussions with, uh, the school system and the Teachers Union. Everyone would have to be on board, uh, to do that. But that is something I would definitely encourage the council to think about, um, as we enter this next phase of the process. And, uh, that will, um, start, I guess, a week from today when we entertain amendments. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's something that the county executive is very excited about. Um, I hope the council would be excited about that possibility too. But, um, we have, uh, some time to think it through and work it out, but I did want to introduce that idea to you. And with that, I will close, uh, with a round of thanks to all involved. Um, I hope everybody gets to take their foot off the gas for at least a little while and process what we've seen, um, today. And then, uh, work to, uh, build consensus on amendments next Tuesday. And then, uh, that will be followed by the supplemental budget to be introduced, uh, the following day after that. So.
All right. Any additional questions for, um, Mr. Trumpauer? Any closing remarks, uh, or comments from any of the council members?
Just want to express a huge thank you, um, to the Budget Office and to our auditor, or to our auditor's office, um, for all the hard work that you've done.
As well. Many thanks, Madam Auditor, to your team, Budget Office. Well done. This is a, lots of work ahead, but this is an exciting year for the county.
All right, great. Any other business, uh, to be brought before the county council? Seeing no hands, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Your second.
Rodvian, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. County Council is adjourned until seven PM on Monday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, when we meet back in the council chambers for regular legislative council meeting. Uh, with that said, uh, enjoy the rest of your day.